Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight for the continuation of the psilocybin public hearing. Tanya, do you want to take it away?
Thank you. Thanks, Tara Dare. Excuse me. For the record, my name is Tanya Seltzman. I'm a senior planner in the Community Development Department. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was begun on November 21st, 2022. At the side of the room, for people who are in here, we do have the agenda packet from the original beginning of the hearing that contains all of the amendments, if anyone's interested in looking at that. And I'm going to do a brief presentation today. We don't need to go through all the procedural stuff to teach people how to use Zoom and all of that, so we'll keep it quick. I'll just do a very brief overview for those who haven't heard this before, but I'll try to minimize staff time so that we can get to the testimony. So with that, so a brief introduction of the proposed text amendments. The proposal at hand, first, it adds new definitions for terms relating to psilocybin. It adds psilocybin service centers as a conditional use with site plan review to the following zones: rural service center, commercial, and mixed use, Terrebonne Commercial, Tamlo Commercial, Sun River Commercial, Sun River Town Center, and rural commercial. It adds psilocybin service centers to the allowable uses in destination resorts. It adds psilocybin testing labs as a conditional use with site plan review to rural industrial and Tamlo industrial zones. And lastly, it adds a new chapter, creating time, place, and manner, otherwise known as TPM, which is a term we toss around a lot, TPM, criteria for psilocybin manufacturers of farm use, manufacturers of processing use, and psilocybin service centers. What is this hearing for? Just want to make this really clear. There's been some confusion in the past. This hearing is not about the opt-out. That vote occurred on November 8th in the general election, and Deschutes County voters voted to overturn the opt-out. So that established that there is going to be a psilocybin program in some capacity in unincorporated Deschutes County. That was decided. What this hearing does talk about or does address is the land use regulations, very specific to the land use criteria that address psilocybin businesses. The program will be going into effect managed by the Oregon Health Authority in 2023. So these amendments are specifically addressing the time, place, and manner of those businesses. And it's important to note, it's note, these amendments operate within the context of the Oregon land use system. For those who aren't familiar with it, it is a fairly rigid system that says what you can and can't do in certain areas. So we're trying to figure out these regulations within the context of that system. The record, which will include all of the memos, presentations, every public comment that we've received via email that's been sent to either me or the board address, that's available at the following website. I know that's a long URL. You can also get to it by just going to the Community Development webpage, and you'll see a psilocybin kind of prominent project, and you can drill down to that, and everything should be up there. Sometimes if you've submitted a comment to me in the last hour or so, it might take, I don't know, 12, 12 to 15 hours to upload, but it will be up there. So that's where you could find all of the materials. So first, I'm going to just briefly summarize the planning commission process, which was the first step in this process. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 29th. That was continued to a second date on October 13th, and the written record closed on October 14th. There were about 32 written testi-- there were exactly 32 written pieces of testimony, and 24 people participated in person across those two hearings. And I'll go into what those Planning Commission recommendations were in a moment. Right now, in fact. And so just to be clear, the Planning Commission has their own hearing process. They had this. And they then issue recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So I'm relaying those recommendations that the Planning Commission determined, that they voted on. And then the Board of County Commissioners will listen to additional testimony tonight, consider written testimony, think about the Planning Commission recommendations, and then make their own decision. So the Planning Commission recommendations were to allow manufacturing as a farm use and as a processing use on forest lands and in addition to EFU lands. So adding the F1 and F2 zones to the EFU lands for basically growing and processing psilocybin, producing fungi. They recommended to amend the service center operating hours to align with the OHA proposed hours, which is 6:00 AM to 11:59 PM. There are allowances beyond this if there's any extenuating circumstances that's written in statute, and we will bring those over to the code if that's the direction received. The other recommendation was to amend the destination resort code to permit psilocybin service centers in destination resorts. This next slide talks about its recommendations from the Planning Commissions, but they're not necessarily translated directly into code. They were just sort of general, more general recommendations. The Planning Commission wanted to recognize that service centers could be allowed as home occupations or commercial activities in conjunction with farm use on EFU land. And this was, for those of you who have been kind of following this process, this was based on interpretation by the Department of Land Conservation and Development for where they believed service centers could occur. And they identified these kind of two, two doors where this could potentially occur on farmland, commercial activities in conjunction with a farm use and a home occupation. And each of those uses have their own set of criteria, their own chapters of code. The Planning Commission recommended to keep these doors open, keep that open as an option. There's still a rigorous process involved in going through that, but they didn't want to necessarily shut those doors. They agreed with staff that the proposed amendments are not subject to a goal five wildlife analysis, and that's explained further in the findings for various reasons in detail in that written document that's found over there on the counter. And lastly, they recommended allowing overnight accommodations in ancillary uses such as meditation and yoga as accessory uses to service centers, if possible. A lot of the testimony in the Planning Commission process recognized the importance of having overnight accommodations in these ancillary uses. Some of the testimony for this process has said the same thing. The Planning Commission wanted to support this, although they recognize that this might be very difficult to do if, and they're not exactly sure how it will be doable within the confines of the system. But they did want to recognize that they, they heard, they heard this testimony, and they, they wanted to just relay that and carry that forward in whatever way that's possible. So to sum up, the locations of the proposed psilocybin uses, manufacturing as a farm use and manufacturing as a processing use are both allowed in EFU, F1, and F2 zones. Service centers would be allowed as a conditional use with site plan review in rural commercial, rural service centers, Sun River Commercial, Sun River Town Center, Terrebonne Commercial, and Tamlo Commercial, and allowed in destination resorts. And testing labs would be allowed to, subject to a conditional use permit and site plan review in rural industrial and Tamlo industrial. So as far as the process and the next steps, as I noted, this is the second day of the public hearing of the Board of County Commissioners process. The first one was on November 21st, a week ago, a week and two days ago. At that time, eight individuals provided in-person testimony, and as of about 4:30 PM today, we've received 17 written comments, including one was passed to us at the hearing and tonight. And as I noted, those are all available or will be by tomorrow morning on the record webpage. And this is just a very general summary of what the comments received thus far have communicated. About 10 people are property owners in destination resorts, and they are against service centers in destination resorts. There's one property owner in a destination resort in favor of them. One comment noted that the, there's a, manufacturing as a farm use really requires a very small area. This commenter was concerned that there was a lot of talk of farms and barns and that sort of thing, and he noted that really you could use the size of a kiddie pool, I think, was his example for certain, for growing. So at the scale, just a comment on the scale. One written comment refined the amendments concerning destination resorts, just sort of finessing that language in terms of how that would work with respect to the master planning process. One commenter was against psilocybin in general and wanting to redo the opt-out vote. And then three testified that they did not want the risk regulations to be overly restrictive. So that's what we've received thus far about, as of about an hour ago. So tonight will be another opportunity to receive public testimony, both in person and on Zoom. After that, the options to move forward are to continue the hearing to a date certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date certain, close the hearing and set a date for deliberations, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. At the last hearing, we discussed the schedule and the timing, and this is a proposed staff recommendations. We can come back to this certainly after testimony. In general, the staff suggestion is to keep the record open until this Friday, December 2nd, at 4:00 PM.
At 4:00 PM.
And this can be finalized at any point, with tentative idea to begin deliberations and potential adoption, depending on how that goes, on December 14th. If, if the board would like regulations to be put in place by the end of this calendar year, it requires emergency adoption. That means that generally the ordinance would be effective either immediately or within 30 days, depending on how we write it. If something is adopted not by emergency, it takes 90 days for that to become effective. The emergency adoption must be unanimous. So we can discuss that later. Just wanted to put that out there now. And I think that is all I have for right now. And now we can go to testimony, and I'll let Tara Dare take it over.
Great. Thank you so much. So let's continue with the public hearing, if you are wanting to speak, and we do have a few people on Zoom apparently. So, but let's go with, and I did have from Brenda, there were, I believe you addressed both of them in your testimony emails that we've received from Deschutes County residents. So thank you. You're allowed to speak for three minutes, and please identify yourself when you do speak. Let's see, is, are there any more blue sheets up here? I need, yes, if you want to hand it in?
Can I just see a little clarification?
Yes?
It just, I want to make sure this isn't a double negative, and it's, you know, chromatically correct, like wasn't on our ballot. So in favor would be in favor of the, what you just described?
We're just working on the rules. It actually, it's not--
Well, I have to check in favor, either neutral or undecided or opposed. So--
You're in favor of--
Form.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes.
We're doing a double negative thing.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Nunzi Gould. And we do have a timer. It should be showing up on the screen, is it not? Okay. Stephanie, you can see the timer?
There it is.
Okay, great. There it is. Go ahead and identify yourself.
Up there. Okay, are we resetting at 3?
She needs to hold three minutes.
Well--
Okay.
My name's Nunzi Gould. I have my address on the sign-in sheet. I would encourage you to give yourself a year before you implement your regulations. In other words, I think this needs to be proven that the Oregon Health Authority can actually manage this program. And so while you might want TPMs, I would recommend that you don't take applications for at least a year. And one of the concerns I have is the capability for the health authority to actually implement this program. And I think there are going to be some twists and turns from their regulations that are going to need some ironing out, and I think it would behoove the county to see this prove itself before it just wands it on. And I, I say that because I've seen a couple of rollouts through the health authority, and I've seen rollouts through the Department of Ag, and there really isn't support services that are available here. There isn't the funding to provide the implementation here. And so the implementation is going to be, you're going to be looking for the health authority to be wanding or to be coalescing compliance with the health authority. And my concern is there aren't resources here to be doing that on behalf of the county. And so I really think it's best for this program to show and prove itself that it has value and, and compliance before it just gets wandered through here. I would also recommend that you not allow service centers in the rural unincorporated communities. The health authority's regulations are very vague when it comes to protecting schoolchildren at church, at school facilities. What constitutes 1,000 feet of setback versus a barrier at a school that would allow a 500-foot setback distance? So these are all just little things that you may not have read about that I believe need teasing out at the statewide level to show that the industry actually performs within what this community is wanting it to benefit. And finally, we have a transportation system that provides our rural communities' transit to our cities. And frankly, keeping this industry within cities allows for response times and the appropriate medical zoning, which really is where this industry should be located. So I'm a proponent of keeping our rural land use laws protected and upheld. I appreciate the time to testify, but on other rollouts from the state, we never had either the funding to implement, the security to implement, and I just think that we owe it to our community to be rolling out in a safe way and not just jump on the bandwagon. So if you're going to adopt something by emergency measures so that your TPMs are in place, I would recommend that you add a line item that says that you will not accept applications for psilocybin for at least a year. And that way you can look and see how other communities are faring, how the state is actually faring on putting the program together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nunzi. Thank you for that testimony. Okay, Rachel Dean?
Good evening, Rachel Dean, and you have my address there. Thank you. I'm in support of the TPMs. I do agree with a lot that Manzi just spoke to. However, I think, you know, saying that we have transit, you know, these, these psilocybin journeys are, it's a long, you know, sometimes all-day process. And I don't know if any of you guys are familiar or if you've had the opportunity to experience a psilocybin journey medicinally, but getting on public transit afterwards is probably not in your best interest or where you'd want to be. So, you know, I worry about folks with, you know, disabilities or, you know, financial access, not being able to get into Bend. Deschutes County is, it's a big space. And also, I mean, this psilocybin mushrooms grow on all continents except for Antarctica. It is a very, very naturally occurring compound in one of, you know, the most prolific, you know, fungi category in existence. I mean, it's all over, right? Fungi, we have a huge fungi underground system in Oregon here, one of the largest in the world, if not the largest. So it's, it's a very natural thing, and to experience this in nature just amplifies the benefits. I don't think anything, anyone here would disagree that we have a lot of challenges facing our society, and what we're doing isn't quite working, you know? So there's going to have to be a time when, when we do take a chance and just, and throw it out there and say, all right, give it up to God, you know, and goddess, and, and let's, let's look to nature. And it's not, it's, yeah, it's, it's not what, you know, alcohol is the most destructive drug that, on the planet, hands down, as far as personally and socially, and it is rampant. It is, it is everywhere, every celebration we go to. And I'm not against alcohol use, but let's, you know, let's look at this all evenly. So I would love to see the opportunity for our rural county and, and business, you know, folks out there to have access and opportunity. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you for your testimony. Stephanie, do we want to call the first person? Are there raised hands now on Zoom?
Yes, just waiting for people to raise their hands.
Okay, yes. Please, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to testify, you need to raise your hand so Stephanie can allow you in to the conversation. Datis, D-A-T-I-S?
Yeah, sorry, that's my boss's name. My name is Elaine.
Okay. Okay, Elaine, can you give your, your full name, please, and your address? Thank you so much.
Elaine Marshall, 2543 Northwest Ivy Way, Redmond, Oregon 97756.
Okay. And you do have three minutes? I think the clock is, if you can see it?
No, I can't see it, but I'll start. So first of all, the testimony previously by Nunzi, I guess is her name, comes from a wildly ignorant place, and they are the words of someone clearly and wholly indoctrinated by the pharmaceutical industry and the many drugs that they produce. So yes, you would want medical facilities nearby, but studies on, if it was pharmaceutical drugs that most people are taking these days, studies on psilocybin safety completely negate these allegations of risk being made by that speaker. She's intentionally sowing fear based on decades-old misinformation deliberately pushed into the cultural consciousness. 24 veterans a day die by suicide. Their rates of suicide are double that of the general population. They also suffer significantly higher rates of traumatic brain injury, which puts them at greater risk for mental health disorders. Research shows 83% of all US veterans, as well, as well as active service duty members, report symptoms of PTSD. We have very many high-quality studies that demonstrate the positive impacts of psychedelic therapy for military veterans, first responders, and the police. Yet people like yourselves and Nunzi are hypnotized by decades-old propaganda--
Please just testify to the board. Don't refer to other testimony.
Okay, but still blockade access to treatment. A vet I talked to was on 13 different psychiatric drugs simultaneously. His care cost $8,000 a month. And after one psychedelic therapy session, he was cured of a substance abuse disorder and has been able to stay off all medications. This vet talked to you too, but you were like so engrossed writing on whatever you're doing that you barely even looked at him. You didn't have the decency to put down your pen and listen to him and the other vets when they shared their stories. Don't think this didn't go unnoticed by them. When one tried to express the horror show that is the psychiatric treatment through the VA, you chastised him by saying, you know a good eye doctor, eye doctor who works with the VA. You stand behind this idea that you're upholding conservative values, but you may be surprised to know that conservatives around the country understand the promise that psychedelic therapy holds for our nation's veterans. The VA currently has five clinical trials going on for psychedelic therapy for veterans. Texas became the first state to, in the country, to approve state funding for psychedelic research since the war on drugs stopped all that research in the 1950s, that started in the 1950s. A Missouri Republican lawmaker filed a bill that would legalize a wide range of psychedelics for therapeutic use. Republican Oklahoma lawmakers recently filed bills to promote research into the therapeutic potential of psilocybin. The governor of Utah signed a bill introduced by a Republican lawmaker to create a task force to study psychedelic therapy. Rand Paul and other Senate Republicans introduced a bill designed to give terminally ill patients access to psychedelic therapy. In other words, there are Republicans who get it, who when they say, thank you for your service, they actually mean it, and they back it up with action, not blockades of partisan temper tantrums. You know, how telling that you continue to block something voters have approved twice now, when multimillion-dollar resorts catering to the affluent can go ahead and offer these services, but people who desperately need them will, will not be able to access them because of their location problems. So do better, be like Texas, which isn't apologizing for their support of psychedelic therapy, but instead crowing about it and announcing their leaders in this movement. Be at the forefront of what has already arrived and what your constituents have told you twice now they support. Effective therapy happens in quiet, nature-based locations away from the noise and congestion of highways and industrial areas that can be triggering to those who have sustained trauma and brain injury in similar environments. Please support these types of locations for these extremely low-impact, non-noticiable facilities. That's all.
Thank you, Elaine, for your testimony. Is it Elaine, or is that correct? Elaine Marshall?
Elaine.
Thank you. Do we have someone else in? David Holland? If you would identify yourself, please, and your address. And you have three minutes for your testimony?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yes, my name is David Holland. I'm at 1971 Northwest Keenan Court in Bend. So I have no financial ties to any planned psilocybin services, but I do have a considerable experience with entheogenic medicines, consider myself knowledgeable on the topic. So I just wanted to make some comments. I also haven't been involved with all the details being discussed with regards to time, place, and manner restrictions, but I think I have a sense of what's at play. So my sense is that, you know, the voters here have said they want these services, and, you know, what we're looking at is how to maximize the benefits while minimizing risks or negatives. And I think that there are some elements that can be provided by a center in a commercial or industrial zone that are important elements, like, you know, a secure shelter, a warm bed, clean bathroom, things like this. But-- But really what's missing from that environment is access to nature, and so I really wanted to underline how important that is. You know, traditional uses of psilocybin spanning millennia have, of course, been done by many cultures in close connection to nature, but we can look within our own culture for the evidence of this. We've known here in North America since the 1950s the importance of set and setting from the work that was done by Osman and Hoffa with, looking at treating alcoholism with LSD, and of course, that's been replicated by, you know, many other studies since then. And when other people try to replicate these results, but stripping out some of the softer elements, you know, doing it in a more traditional Western hospital room type setting, not only do you not replicate the tremendous positive results, but you get more negative outcomes. And so my concern is that the more restrictive controls we put on psilocybin services here in Oregon, the more potential we have for worse outcomes. So I confidently can say that psilocybin services should be allowed in rural or natural settings. To anyone who's had this experience, this is obvious. And, you know, unrelated to drugs of any kind, there's a growing body of research around the health benefits of being out in nature. And not only is, is being in nature a nice to have, it's a, it's a have-to-have for the recovery and therapeutic benefits that you get with these types of services. So I think if you look at the body of research, ample subjective experience from people who've had these experiences, and just kind of intuitive understanding of the health benefits of being in nature, that I really want to hit home that there's a synergistic relationship between entheogenic experiences, plant medicines, and nature, and you just can't recreate that in an office building or an industrial park. And furthermore, the noises of the city, like traffic sirens, et cetera, can not only be distracting from the healing work, which is so important, but actually frightening and quite detrimental for people that are having those experiences. So I just wanted to, you know, report that I'm supportive of reasonable and non-restrictive restrictions and for psilocybin services to be offered in rural and natural settings. It's very important.
Thank you, David. Thank you for your testimony this evening. Stephanie, you have one more? Okay. Thank you. If you want to, is she unmuted? Yes. Thank you.
Hello. I just want to agree with both Elaine and David for their, they said it very succinctly. It's very clear that anybody that knows anything about psilocybin, that it's an excellent way to be in the country, in the nature, and it's so beneficial for so many people. It's, there's a lot of history on it, and even AA was founded on a journey, a psilocybin journey, as I understand. And so that's the spiritual nature of it, and it's helped so many people, and I just think that both Elaine and David said it very clearly, and that's-
Oh, Adele, you need to give us your address. Did you do that?
Okay. 67134 Gist Road, Bend, Oregon 97703.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm sorry to interrupt your testimony. Did you-
No problem.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, that's all. I just wanted to say that it's, I just think that there's a lot of people that know exactly how to do it in a healthy, kind way to have maximum health for both the vets that have absolute need, or anybody with PTSD. And it, and people can also just know themselves better, and it's, I think it's just a very important thing to have in our countryside.
Right.
And that's it. Elaine and David said it very well.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Stephanie, is there anyone else?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. If you're on Zoom and you want to testify, please raise your hand. No more raised hands? Okay. Is someone else want to testify in the room, then? If you bring up the blue sheets, please? Thank you. Okay, Piper Lucas?
Oh, okay. Sorry. I was, I was the one on top.
You can stay on deck, right there. Two tables, yep.
Hi, again. Thank you is really what I want to say. It's snowing out, and it's 6:30 at night, and we're all here, and I just really, really appreciate your service to listen. And I've been up here before, and you've heard me say the nature-based thing. And honestly, the TPMs are, are not that bad. We can work with them for the first couple of years. They're not horrible. Lane County, you know, they don't have any TPMs. That would be the ideal, but there's, there's ways we can work with these TPMs. What I am asking the three of you to do is to honor the process. There has been a lot of time spent with the Planning Commission. They heard a lot of hours of testimony that were really good, and they wrote pretty good TPMs that most businesses can work with. So I would request that we honor the system that's in place and vote along with what the Planning Commission has suggested. And our Development Department has spent a lot of time thinking about these things as well. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Piper. Thanks for testifying again. Julie?
Hi. My name is Julie Matovich, and I just wanted to reiterate what we heard from Elaine, David. I came in a little late, so I didn't hear the testimony before that, and Piper, and just stress the need for that natural setting for this therapy. And, and that the voters have said twice, and each ti, I mean, and the second time, they said it in greater numbers. And I think that reflects that people are learning and becoming educated and learning the benefits of psilocybin therapy and how it can help the average person, the person who's always struggled with anxiety. And we all know those people. We know those people who've been on this antidepressant meds, and they, there, there are bad side effects. Pharmaceuticals don't work. And here we have an opportunity to use a natural medicine that works, and our veterans deserve to be able to access this in a natural setting that's not going to be in a commercial setting with loud noises that's going to cause them harm. And they fought for our freedom, and we should be, they should be able to access this legally and in the setting that they prefer. And we all know someone. It's not, I want to, it's not a political issue. It's not a right or a left. It's, it's a human issue about healing, and mental health is a severe crisis in our country, in our community, and this is a real solution. And the, I'm so grateful to the Planning Commission, who listened with open hearts to all the testimony and, and gave a thoughtful, a lot of thought to it, and presented something that is a good start as we learn, as we go. But I hope that political and personal preferences don't interfere with the opportunity we have to provide real healing to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else in the room that cares to testify tonight?
Can you just cut out the middle man?
Yeah, you can just hand it here. Thank you. Oh, yes. Tim, thank you so much. I know we got your email, too.
I am. I'm Tim Cedar Blum. My address is on the form. Just some thoughts about therapy with these psychedelics. Yes, outdoors in nature is wonderful, but what do we do if somebody scheduled an appointment for these therapy services on a night like tonight? There's not going to be much going on outside. So why can't we offer both indoor and outdoor services? These are trained therapists. A lot of these therapies go on in a therapeutical environment, an office with a couch. They do a lot of these therapies under blindfold to work through these people's problems. So not all the therapies are going to be happening outside in nature. Now, if climate-controlled spaces can be provided, there could be an option of having both indoor and outdoor therapy areas. There could be potentially an atrium that's climate-controlled with vegetation, a water feature, things of this nature that can substitute for a natural experience outdoors in winter Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your email, and thank you for your testimony today, too. All right. Is there anyone else in the room? Okay. So, and no one else has joined on Zoom, correct, Stephanie?
I don't see any other raised hands.
No other raised hands. Okay, all right. Going once, going twice, no more testimony in the room?
Good job, yeah.
I do not want to, not allow someone their opportunity at this moment. Okay, so I believe we may close the public testimony now. So, Tanya, let's go back to the details. I believe we were saying that written testimony could still be submitted by this Friday at 4:00 PM, December 2nd.
Yeah, I'll put that, that screen back up so we can.
I'd also like to ask Tanya a clarifying question. So that one of the suggestions was to not implement time, place, and manner rules for a year and not accept applications during that year? I, I wanted to know if that is actually something we're allowed to do.
I was actually wondering this.
I mean, my understanding was, my understanding was, if we don't have time, place, and manner rules in place on January 2nd, essentially, people can submit applications for licenses and for, you know, land use applications. And essentially, what we'd be doing is, is a similar use consideration. So it's not like we can say you can't apply for a year, but, you know, basically, without any TPM rules, people would submit applications, and we would just compare to something we do have land use regulations around and have to proceed with consideration of that. I mean, is that-
I think that's twofold, and I'll kick it to-
Two questions.
... my team over here. But I think the first question is, can the county not accept any applications in kind of any capacity for one year? The second is, what happens if, if there are no TPM regulations passed, but we're still accepting applications? What is that kind of middle ground? That's twofold, so I'll turn it over to them.
Great. Hi, Stephanie Marshall, for the record, Assistant Legal Counsel. Great questions. As, as the commissioners know, the voters did not agree to opt out, so, you know, we have not prohibited psilocybin here in Deschutes County. And in order for a property owner or business owner to obtain a license from the OHA, they're going to need a land use compatibility statement from Deschutes County. So we can't say no. So in, in filling out an ALUX statement, the, without TPMs, without prescribed zones in which we say, yes, this is allowed in these zones pursuant to a conditional use permit, for example, then a similar use analysis would have to be completed. And Commissioner Chang, you were just kind of going through your understanding of, of what that looks like. So it would be a little bit more onerous, more time-consuming, potentially more expensive. But we don't have the opportunity to say, no, we're not going to complete this ALUX, because we have to answer it yes or no. And in, in order to answer it yes without TPMs, we'll have to go through the similar use analysis. And I'll, I'll see if Peter Gatausk has anything to add.
I don't have anything to supplement.
Thank you for that, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
So I'll just pop that screen back up for one second.
I can pop-
Yeah, just pop it right back up.
It's easier to, for people, myself as well. So the tentative idea was to keep the record, the written record open until 4:00 PM on December 2nd, and then the board would conduct deliberations on Wednesday, I believe, December 14th. That would be when staff comes back and kind of summarizes all of the testimony that's been received, present some options in terms of different types of ordinances that are crafted in different ways, and have that ready for the board to consider potentially at that meeting for either first reading, first and second reading, or continued deliberations to possibly, there's a little bit of wiggle room for a subsequent date to keep discussing.
So you mean the 21st of December?
Either the 19th or the 21st, depending on when the board is meeting.
Okay. Probably the 19th, 10th, whatever. All right.
So, yeah, I, I like the proposed, you know, keeping the written record open for a couple more days and then get into a deliberation. So, you know, just a little bit of feedback. I mean, this is about land use. You know, there's a lot of passion on the subject, obviously, and there, some of the testimony was, you know, do it or else, or whatever the concepts were here, but it's truly just about land use. What's a non-conflicting logical path for somebody to walk in the door, apply for it, and get a good response? And it was great that it was pointed out that the similar use analysis might even be more of a unclear path. So having TPMs in place, you know, is, is, is the path we're going down at this time. So thank you very much for testimony this evening.
Really appreciate it. Commissioner Chang, did you have anything else you wanted to add tonight?
I, I would say that if, if there are no TPMs in place on January 2nd and applications start coming in, and we need to go through a similar use analysis, that, that could be onerous, but if we don't accept the Planning Commission recommendations and proceed with very narrow, very restrictive TPMs, then there won't really be any opportunities for people to seek to establish service centers anyway. So the, the will of the people, as expressed in the recent vote on Measure 9152, was to make access to psilocybin services available within the community, within the rural unincorporated portion of the community. And I think we should be doing our best to implement the will of the people.
Tanya, will you have a chart, like normally when we go through different projects and we look at things, you know, that have been presented by the Planning Commission? Will we be doing that, or will we be just taking the whole thing?
It's, it's, it depends on how, I could do it either way, basically. The way we did it with the Planning Commission, usually a decision matrix is made when it's, when there's kind of a lot of decision points here. I don't think, it might not elevate to that. I'll just communicate it in the clearest way, but we will discuss it kind of issue by issue. For instance-
I mean, destination resorts.
You know, that kind of-
Right.
I'll, I'll break it down, and then, you know, we have some anticipated directions, and I'll try to anticipate some possible packages to make, but we'll go kind of through those things.
Okay, great. That's, that's what I was hoping you were going to say, because I think that is important. You know, it's an important issue, and, you know, we've had a lot of testimony, and the Planning Commission had even more, what, 32 written and 24 in person? So we'll be looking at all that. So, so therefore, I think we have an agenda going forward, and we should be able to discuss, deliberate then on the 14th.
Okay. If I may just pop and say my, my little disclaimer about the record, it will close on December 2nd at 4:00 PM. If you're going to email me, please do it, not at 3:59 PM, because sometimes it will make it. So just plan ahead a little bit, and it's much appreciated. And my email address is on the website is tanyasaltzman@deschutes.org. That's my speech.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. To repeat, that's in a couple, what, on Friday? In a couple days. So on 4:00 p.m. And we know how emails go. You usually have to send them a bit earlier or they won't arrive. So please be aware of that. So thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for testifying tonight.
So the oral portion of the hearing is closed